Okay, welcome. I'd like to call back the meeting to order after executive session. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, so please silence your devices.
No, it's the microphone so we can hear.
First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Do we have any? No public comment. Okay, recognition. I will turn it over to our Vice Chair.
Yes, so it's my distinct pleasure to let you know that we have a new nominee for the Educator Hall of Fame. Her name is Barbara McGovern. People know who she is, yes?
Yep.
So Barbara was a 35-year educator here in North Andover. She taught at Franklin, grades one through five. There was a lot of love about, from fifth graders, so a lot of kids remember from that. She was known for her love of Mickey Mouse, and I can let you know, when I called her to tell her about this honor, I had to leave a voicemail, and she sang the Mickey Mouse Club song on her announcement, so that was very cute. She was very well-known for philanthropy and for, did a lot of work with kids, to link kids with senior citizens in town, made special buddies after-school programs, and there was a lot of work, mostly with 4th and 5th graders, getting together with senior citizens in town. Very active member of Rotary and raised money and materials for people in need, and she still does that to this day, so.
Does that Beam's Dreams?
It is!
Beam's Dreams, who donated to every 3rd grade class in North Andover a thesaurus, it's been a long day, and a dictionary.
Yes.
She collected likes?
Absolutely right.
And a big fan of Steve Nugent's as well.
Yes, and Mr. Nugent did write a comment about her as well. So she was positively thrilled and was very happy to be, to accept that honor.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so.
I was excited when she was there, quite a transfer to, redistributed to Kittredge, transfer. Great, great teacher, I knew her, I've known her in my adult life too, so I didn't know this was happening tonight either, so I'm thrilled for Mrs. McGovern as well.
I do believe we need to take a vote to support her as our Educator Hall of Fame recipient this year.
Make a motion to decide?
Since you know her, why don't you make the motion?
I will probably make a motion to approve the nominee Barbara McGovern to be the 2018 Hall of Fame inductee for the North Andover Educators Hall of Fame.
Excellent.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Treasi, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Do a roll call.
Aye.
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 Hooray.
And the ceremony date is October 24th?
Yes, Wednesday night.
At the Stevens again?
At the library.
6:00 PM.
Except for professional teachers, guys.
Yes, the Rotary.
Just making sure.
6:00 PM.
Yes.
Okay, we have a student report tonight?
Yay!
Caitlin's back.
Hi, how are you guys?
Welcome back.
So yeah, so I'm Caitlin. I'm gonna be the senior student representative and...
I'm Jack. I'm gonna be the junior student representative.
So I thought that I could start off with actually talking about something that was over the summer at the school, so I was lucky enough to get off the waiting list and get into the college readiness class. And I, since I was on the waiting list, my mom had made me spend the summer writing my essay already, and I'd started to do the comment app, and then I got there, ended up completely rewriting the essay, and I just thought it was a super helpful class, because even though I thought, I was like, "I'm pretty prepared", and then I was like, "You know what? Yeah, this is, this might be a better idea to do different things", so I definitely think that it's something that we should continue doing, because it was super helpful.
So the next thing on our list is the parking at the high school, so as you all know...
Junior parking?
Yes, so the junior representative.
So as you know, there has been a parking issue at the high school. As it is right now, I believe there is, there are 34 spots remaining for any students in the lottery for the remaining spots. I believe there are 86 students, so the drawing will be held tomorrow. Whoever gets, wins that lottery will get a spot for the school year, and everybody else will find a way to get to school. It's an issue, but we have to make the most of it. As a junior, it's not the best, but we'll, we'll make do with what we have going on.
I will say, like, as a senior, since I was kind of here, talking about it occasionally with the parking situation, I definitely felt like going into it, I had like, kind of a unique thing, because I'd kind of, some people kind of understood what was happening last year. I know that Liam kind of did research, and we ended up talking about it a little bit more in-depth here, so since I kind of, as a senior, I am lucky enough to have a parking pass, but I, since I also was sitting in the junior spot and kind of witnessed everything that happened, I kind of am glad that we're doing something proactive beforehand, rather than, because I think every year we have that issue at the end of the year, when sophomores and juniors all started getting their licenses, and they'd be like, "Yay, I can finally park!", but it'd be like, "Seniors are still here, so no, you can't." So it was definitely, it's definitely nice, even though I know that it's probably upsetting to a lot of the juniors to be able to, like, be senior and not have to worry about when the spring comes, making sure I beat the underclassmen to get the spot that I paid for. So I will say, it's like, it's not the best, but I'm happy that we're at least trying something, and we'll be able to hopefully next year figure out whether it was the best decision, or if we should figure out something new, so.
How many, how many spots were showed up there?
Uh, there are, there are 314 total.
For students?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And...
It's like, I remember when I first heard about the situation where juniors weren't getting spots, I was kind of confused, because I was kind of like, I mean, like, we do have a big class of seniors, and I ended up talking to Mr. Jackson about this, and it was like, he had said, like, normally they get like 100, maybe more than that, seniors who, first day of school before school, try to go and get a spot, and then this time around, we had, I mean, however many there are now, 300-something, who went out, and were like, wanting to get a spot. So I definitely think it might be something about, like, because they're numbered, you almost be like, "I want to get like, a good spot", or like, "I don't know if I'm definitely gonna like, have the car all the time, but I don't want to be like, stuck in the back", and I think also, I feel like that's kind of the reason everyone was kind of more going for it and everything. So I remember at first, I thought, "Oh, did they oversell it in the past?", like, "Is that why it's such a big thing?", and he was like, "No, it's the same amount of spots as there always have been, it's just the big thing that, all of a sudden, seniors have been like, 'I need a spot'", so I just thought that was interesting.
So every senior, if they want a spot, they get one?
Yeah, so I did, Mr. Jackson did say that he kind of, his main priority was making sure the seniors got, like, their first spot, because he was kind of like, "It is nice when juniors get it, but like, every senior, for the most part, is like eligible, because they've had their license somewhere off their JOL", and he was talking, like, for the juniors, there were some, like, "I had a May birthday, so I didn't even get my license until they were out", so he was kind of like, he wanted to make sure that the grade that had everyone eligible really got their shot and got that time to make sure that they could register.
Although seniors going forward now, if they don't already have one, can't get one after the lottery, right?
Yes, it's like, they were given, I mean, we were given multiple days, and we were given days at school, so we definitely were giving seniors as much of an opportunity as they could. So I know someone, like, the first day of school had to get it, because they were working the days over the summer, so there were definitely opportunities for students to still get passes. That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, exactly.
One of the issues was, they went back to the numbers, because the students wanted to go back to the numbers? We used to have the numbers.
We can assign.
Assign. But what he, what was interesting is, he said, though, they will keep an eye on monitoring, like, who, now they can tell if someone doesn't drive, you know, and then have a dis-
The spot's empty.
If there's a spot empty, because someone said that, "I really want a spot, but don't have a car", you know, they'll also monitor that and work with you folks, and potentially the Student Council as well, to think about other options.
I was like, "The Student Council is gonna be raffling off two spots in addition", so I've been telling people.
Sounds like a good moneymaker.
That's what I was saying.
It's $40.
For the whole year?
For the whole year.
I don't believe most sophomores-
No sophomores will have their license at this point, because they're September birthdays, so they can get their license six months after they turn 16.
But they could have put in a request for a spot?
You, in order to get a spot, you need to have your license and your registration, so if, I mean, you could take your parents' registration if you don't have a car, but you definitely need to have your license before you even put in.
And that's what I, as a mom of a junior, I had a lot of parents say to me, like, "This was our plan for the year, my kid's got to drive", but they don't have their license yet even.
Yeah.
But they said that the day they get their license, they're gonna be driving them to school, themselves to school, but clearly that's not happening.
Yeah.
So they probably had to be the kids to actually have license in hand.
Is someone left your, your spot?
I think, I think we should stop now.
It might be a cool thing, though, for the Student Council, if this, you know, it's been an issue since we opened in 2004. In 2004, there were 1,365 students, and you have, you know, maybe about 80 more now, but it's always been a challenge, it's always been seniors first, most of the time juniors get stuff. Maybe a chance to, like, actually brainstorm whether there are other opportunities, or places that might work as a satellite. I, I can't think of any, but I'm sure that you guys are really smart and...
Yeah, Mr. Jackson sat down with my class officers today and our class advisors to actually talk about that, discuss other options, since there is such a large demand, and it was a really good meeting. We, we talked through places in town that maybe kids could walk from, like, public parking on streets or side roads, whatever the case may be, and it was a really good meeting. It was, Officer Enright was there, so he could let us know what would or wouldn't be, like, sanctioned by the town of North Andover, the police department, so it was a really good meeting, so.
And you can all share that with your classmates?
Yeah, of course.
That's great.
Then how many spots are there for, like, visitors or parents who kind of-
Elector day volunteers?
Need to be there? Well, that's, that's a whole other.
Mr. McDevitt, off the top of my head, I do believe that the visitor parking is to the right of the main entrance and over.
Like six or eight or 10?
Yeah, it's usually full.
It's usually full. I, I do know, though, that, I think Mr. Jackson did a really good job with making sure there was enough actually spots up there for staff.
Right.
Because in years past, to accommodate students, they've tried to put as many as they could put in that top lot as well in the back row.
Right.
So there may be a whole bunch of options, too.
Okay.
When they built it, they had the green space and the curbs, because it was on such a small footprint to begin with, because of all the wetlands. Like, when you drive in North Andover High, there's wetland poles to the right, wetland poles to the right, left, and it's right on Kachikowick Brook, so who knows? Maybe at some point, we could even carve out a few more.
That's a super helpful update.
I was like, and so then the other thing that we kind of wanted to talk about is, we both ended up having junior and senior meetings on the first day of school, kind of welcome back, and they really talked about parking, probably more so to the juniors, and the other thing that they really talked about was vaping, and like, juuling, and kind of how, I remember last year, we kind of talked about it, because it was a little bit of an issue at the high school, and so they definitely took notice of it, and like, ta, started talking to us a little bit about, like, different precautions they're gonna start taking. They were considering keeping doors open, like, and for entering the bathroom, that way it's like, you still have like, the privacy of stalls and everything, and it's like, but just that way, if like, you're hanging out there for a long time, or obviously if there's smoke coming out of there, it'll be a clear indication that something's happening that probably shouldn't be.
Yeah, they talked about that at our meeting, too. Also Nurse McDonald came, she talked about the health risks of vaping, juuling, all those things. It, I think it was good that, to have that educational side of things, as well as the, like, policy that the school's gonna start to enforce the new rules, but I definitely think that discussing the health risks might, might be helpful for helping the problem succeed.
As like, and I know a lot of the banding chorus people were really hoping that, like, there could be different policies, because I know last year, in order to stop it, they ended up blocking the doors, and they were like, "That's great", but it's like, "We have to use the bathroom", you know, so it's like, I'm really hoping that, like, with the new kind of brainstorming and everything, we can figure out a good way to still be able to use the facilities, and also have to make sure that we try to keep it drug-free, so. And then lastly, to kind of be more happy, it's like, we survived the first three days of school. After-school clubs have started up. I mean, I know some clubs haven't even had meetings, like Student Council, but we're starting to kind of welcome new people in. We had, Student Council did something on the first day of school, where we did a welcome to NASWAL for the transfers and freshmen, just to kind of be like, "Yay, you're here, you made it", and I know some of the officers were handing out Jolly Ranchers and Mints to the people walking into school, so we're trying to make sure everyone felt welcome. Are you on Student Ambassadors?
Yeah, so I ran, I helped run the freshman orientation and the new student transfer orientation. It went really well. Mr. Nugent runs that club, he does a great job of it. The new leaders for that club also helped manage the orientation. It all went super well. The freshmen and new transfers ran through their schedules before the rest of the student body arrived, so that's always super helpful. I have a sister who, who's a freshman, and she said that she thought it went great for, as, from the freshman perspective, so, yeah.
That's, that's been the first three days of NAS.
Super informative.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a great year.
So, next on our agenda is public input for the proposal to name the wrestling room. Back in June, we voted to open a naming process for a room, the wrestling room in the high school, so per our policy, we need to have two meetings soliciting public input. Seeing none, all right, we will move on. Consent agenda and the approval of minutes from August 17th.
I'm going to present the minutes for August 17th as presented in the packet.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Mably. Mr. Treasi?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you should say aye.
Aye.
That's like, the one time we can do a non-roll call.
Oh, is it?
Took me a whole year to figure that out, but yeah.
All right, good to know. All right, for my chair's report, I only have a couple of items. During executive session tonight, we approved all minutes for executive session from, to, from May 2017 up through May 2018.
Yes.
So those are available upon request.
Do you want to just tell people why there's that backlog?
Most of the executive session minutes had to do with an ongoing negotiations between the school committee and the Teacher, Teaching Assistant Association, so that is why it took us a year to release those minutes. On October 4th is the annual geography night at the middle school, from 6:00 to 8:00, always a popular event. And we already mentioned the Hall of Fame ceremony on October 24th. And the only other thing I would say is, everybody check your school calendars for open house dates. They're coming up fast and furiously. And superintendent's report.
Great. I'm thrilled, actually, to talk about my entry so far. I'm pretty excited about it, and I, as I mentioned before to this group, and brought it to you folks last May to look at. Although I have a long historical perspective here, it's been really nice to hear people, as I tell them, they're experts from their own perspectives and their own experiences, and that's the lens in which I've been able to meet a lot of folks this summer, not only in community groups here, at the library, different places. I've been to a few schools already, met with Franklin, met with the NAIPAC. I was very kind to Maureen Ryan and her husband to host. So it's, it's been eye-opening in the sense of pretending I don't know anything about North Andover, but to really hear from them, you know, things that they are really proud of, and it's going well, things that they think need work, and, you know, other tidbits, you know, advice, programming, decision-making, transparency, et cetera. So additionally, it's been really nice to meet with a lot of the department heads, particularly public safety, in conducting those things, Mr. Mailer, all those important relationships. So I'm looking forward now, really, I tried to get a lot of schools in August. I have the sense that, since many of them thought they know me pretty well, that they were not chomping at the bit as much as they were with the last superintendent to do an August meeting, so we'll be doing, I have Sergeant next week, and I have Kittredge next week, so I'm looking forward to those. And then I'll be coming forward in December with a report, and it's a really nice community needs assessment. What did I find? How will this impact this year's budget with a possible couple recommendations, as you'll see in the goals later, but also have a final report in May that's really gonna drive this district in terms of maybe possible changes in our objectives and/or initiatives in the strategic plan. So, pretty exciting. It's been nice to meet a lot of folks, and I've met a lot of folks who are brand-new to North Andover from all different places, transplants. And one of the reasons they chose North Andover, a lot of them say, is because of the education, so. And then opening of schools, I'd like to start with our new Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center. We knew that it was gonna be very tricky and very tight getting in there, as they were finishing up parking lot work over the weekend, getting in, there's still some work to be done on the outside, and we put a lot of preparation and planning into it. That said, the opening day didn't go as well as we had anticipated. We had a very difficult pickup and drop-off, and I think we were, we were expecting that, but we thought we had planned appropriately that it would go well. It didn't go well, and as a result, we got the team together last night, till about 9:00. Jim, Mary Lou, Judy, Donna, Lorraine, and we made some adjustments and some changes, and, you know, just in terms of some of the logistics, we cut 20 minutes off the morning drop-off today, 20 minutes off the morning, afternoon pickup, and 40 minutes off the bus. That being said, I, you know, I want to make no mistake about it, anytime there's anything new, it's gonna be a challenge. We know that it was going to be challenging. I'd like to acknowledge that, yeah, I think the first day was more difficult than we thought, but we also have two staffs that have merged together, who have just moved into the building. The site work is very tight up there. You know, and the, weighing the option to move in and not move in, there's some really tremendous things happening in the classroom. At the same time, we knew that there's going to have to be work on the outside. I was pleased with all the work that this team did, and not only this team, but I have to tell you that Mary Lou and Judy, I think they've lived there for the last five days, as well as, before I talk about the teachers, the central office, these, we've been there every day directing traffic, we've been working with the police, the town manager, and then the curriculum coordinator is Kristin Ando, and Carol Lockrum, and Jaclyn, and Anne. Everyone's going full, full-tilt, but more importantly, the way the staff has rallied to come together was remarkable. You know, to load kids up on a bus today by 3:24 with the last bus out, and yesterday it wasn't till 4:00. But we also have to remember, the unknown oftentimes is difficult. When we have kindergartens in, in regular schools, guess what? They have 5th grade buddies that walk them down. There's established routines, and, yeah, I still think it's going to be a work in progress, but I think it's getting better and better every day. I think that the work that they did today on the bus, the car pickup and the walkers, will get better, particularly as we open up some more space, get some fences down, close up some pieces to that. And that being said, there's been a lot of focus, particularly from that age group, about that. But I also want to say, I think this may have been the best opening for all the remaining schools in the district, and they're humming along, and there's a huge, you know, this isn't just about making class size lower in elementary and in kindergarten, more distributive in all the positives. Like, it's opened up really awesome spaces that, appropriately, for all of our other kids, too, and that's been going really well. So I do feel a little bit neglectful that, you know, I have made it to every school this week, but we have literally been, including Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, recess duty and lunch duty, working. I would say it's a work in progress, it did not go any way that we planned at the opening day, but it was much better today, and I think, as we continue to work, we'll continue to make adjustments. On that note, with the opening of school, I'll ask the team if they want to chime in on the AB ECC or any other school, and more importantly, I wanted to have Jim just give a bus update, because every year in the beginning of the year, it seems we struggle with buses for, oh, boy. As, as long as I've been paying attention at meetings, you know, as an assistant superintendent and as a principal, the first two or three weeks of busing is, every year has been problematic, and it takes time to iron out. But I also think, a little bit of it's been exasperated by, you know, 50% of those parents up there are new to first-time kids in school, and, you know, when you see trucks and things, and we've shut down equipment in the day and all that, but the busing has come up, but I think it's a lot like the traditional years, and it's gonna take us a while to get used to the pattern. I was telling Ms. Mably this morning that I really surprised that, I forget sometimes how bad the traffic is by the high school in the morning, but everyone's just used to it, but literally, I was in traffic for 15 minutes this morning trying to get up there, so.
Well, this morning, there was a Hugh Jackson in the 93 that contributed, because traffic in town was a nightmare.
It was.
It wasn't just-
I guess it would, he'll come down 125.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that jams up everything.
Do you guys want to add anything? Because these guys have done a great job, but I really, honestly, the teachers have been remarkable, and, you know, they're just coming together for the first time, and they just got in their rooms last week, so.
The rooms look fantastic.
Yes, they really do, and what I'd like to add is, Dr. Gilligan said, you know, we've spent the last three days there, so being able to participate in the pickup and drop-off of students in the lunchtimes really gave us a nice perspective of the incredible work that our teachers do. It was really a nice reminder for those of us who have been out of the classroom for quite a while, what it's actually like to be in the classroom again, and how much you have to just give, give, give to your kids in that classroom. So it was wonderful to see that, and I just want to thank the teachers for that, but also from the perspective of the parents, as somebody who is, you know, taking students out of a car, putting students in a car. The parents were very grateful that we were doing that, they were thanking us for the new building, saying that today their kids had a wonderful day yesterday, so overall, it really was positive for the children and for the families, even though we are definitely working through some bumps.
James?
Yeah, as far as that new school goes, Cindy, a parent had asked me to write something regarding the opening of the new school, and one of the lines I had said was, "I was amazed at turning over a building to the staff, finally giving, getting it to them, so they could prepare their classrooms", and they turned it from a building into a school in no time. As far as the parents go, the parents have been great, really, they're supporting us, we're out there, and they're like, "Hang in there" as they're driving by.
More than you know, I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it helps. But I am really confident it's gonna get better. Got better today, and we really feel like, as we get better at the, getting the students out of the cars and into the cars coming up, as all the other schools have developed a routine, and they're able to do so, I really think it's gonna get a lot better, so that will continue. As far as transportation goes, every year, every district has the same issues. It's the learning curve. It, it's kind of a 50/50. It's learning the routine and getting that set, and then times get down to where you want them to be, and then there are those routes that just aren't working, that we have to make adjustments for. So I think the message I want people to have is the fact that we take your input, but we're continuously monitoring the times, and we're not happy not hearing from people. We want to see them getting where they're supposed to be on time, and we're continuing to make adjustments as we go. So you may have changes in the next couple of weeks to your route or to your stop, or whatever it might be, but that's so that we get, we're getting everybody to school on time and, and home in a reasonable time.
And some of the most troubling, the, some of the routes that we anticipate there's some trouble with, Jim's been assigning Lucy to the bus to actually ride it each day, so she's been tracking some of that, you know, really, getting out towards Boxford, there's no easy way to get out there.
Well, just as an example, one of the routes, the software isn't always correct, and we had a parent call and say, "That just isn't possible", so I drove the route, and he was right, that was not possible. So we are making changes there.
And lastly, I'd just like to thank the parents for, you know, the 25 or so that provided very meaningful and thoughtful input about their first day at the AB ECC. We took that really into account, and we, you know, made some changes, and we'll continue to evaluate daily and get better. And that, once we get everything settled there, I think it's gonna be a pretty spectacular place, and once things open up with the fences down and the construction landscaping done, I'm pretty excited. Before we, one other thing is, a lot of teachers and/or kids were asking me this week about a half-day today, so I sent out a heat advisory the other day, I hope you guys got it, you know, that it was going to be hot, and to, you know, bring some water, and we'll have plenty of water at the schools, but the weather's gonna break tomorrow, but I did think it was funny that, not on Twitter, but I got some emails from students saying, "Dr. Gilligan, you know you knew, but we don't know if you know about heat", and I said, "Well..."
And also last week, you know, a lot of our neighbors did that, so I think that was a new idea, that never crossed anybody's mind before.
Well, as my wife said today in Lawrence, she's the head of guidance, she said, they had a full day of school, because the week before, they had half-days every day, but the superintendent put out an announcement that let kids know that if they wanted to stay home, it wouldn't count as an absence. So she said they had about 90-something percent attendance in the morning, and by about 10:00, there was really no one at the high school, unless the kid passed, we're not with the kids, but.
Dr. Gilligan, I just don't want you to sell yourself short, but last night, while he and the team were working, he responded to all of the parent concerns, either on the phone, and the team, too. I saw somebody said, "Oh, Mary Lou sent me an email at 11:00 at night", so they were there much later than, than stated, and responded personally to every single concern, so I want to thank you for that, and the team for that.
That's our job, and this is the first experience for those kids, and we want it to be the best experience possible. And they only get that first day once, but, you know, it's going to be a heck of a year, and every kid that I talked to said they had, and the parents- And every kid that I talked to said they had, and the parents that I talked to said their kids had a great day. Most of the issues were around pickup and drop off and busing. And we'll get there, and it's going to be a lot better in two weeks or so, Jim, when Riley finishes up all of the curbing, we get the fences down, we open that place up, and then the Atkinson playground starts up soon, so.
Soon as they're done with that, they move on to the playground.
So can I just make a couple of quick, so, one, I mean, I'm encouraged to hear, you know, obviously, we made great improvements with everything kind of moving forward. I think we cannot communicate enough in this scenario. And I'm immensely pleased that we responded to every email, whether it was, or phone call, you know, however these parents communicated. I think it's really important that they hear from us. I think, you know, as proactive as we can be about, you know, "Guys, this is what went right today." You know, "We dropped times by 20 minutes, you know, here's our plan for tomorrow." You know, I think the first day that we were there, you know, because of the cement that was being poured, you can only drop three kids off at a time. Today, it was 10 to 12, you know, so that instinctively just makes the day or the drop off go so much faster. But that's a huge piece, and for people to know and understand that, I mean, I think that is great. So I would just encourage you to continue that communication, because to not hear anything is horrible. And the best thing that we can have people say is, "I wasn't sure what was happening, but my God, then I got 15 emails." Or, you know, "I saw it on Twitter," or, you know, wherever else it was out there. The one thing that I would say is, you know, I don't know a ton of kindergarten kids, but I've talked to a number of kindergarten parents. And the parents, I think, were more kind of concerned about what that drop off was, how it looked, all of those pieces that were going on. But then I said, "Well, how did your student do? Did your daughter, your son have a great day? You know, was it good?" And they're like, "Oh, my God, they had the best day, and they loved it, they had, you know, it was awesome." And so I think that that, you know, really speaks volumes to the teachers and the teaching assistants, and the custodian, and all the administration that was there, that I know it was hectic, it was hectic for them. I mean, I think you really kind of spoke that it wasn't just merging two schools together, it was merging one piece of five different elementary schools and the ECC together. And that team did an absolutely amazing job. And I'm sure that they're frustrated, you know, with certain things, but I think that they, you know, they did what they could, and the best thing that they could do with the kids, and the kids had a great day. And so I really think that they really need to be recognized. For a little bit of sweat and tears, and, you know, Mr. Millie said, you know, "We gave them a building, and they turned it into a school." I wasn't expecting to go in there and see blank bulletin boards or, you know, things like that. I mean, I knew that they would kind of, I was really impressed at, you know, those classrooms look like, I don't want to say lived in, because that makes them sound old, but, you know, they were decorated, you know, and I know that they will, you know, continue to be adding to all that stuff. But I was really impressed with the structure of the building and the look of it, and just, you know, it looked like they'd been there. So that was great. And they worked really hard in really hot days.
And they were there on the weekends. And I would just say to the communication end, I was fortunate this Monday and Tuesday to be able to send something out both nights, Monday and Wednesday night personally, to all the families there. But Mary Lou and Judy have also been sending a daily update, so.
Great.
That's really important.
We thought it was better since it went a little better today, that they would send out the communication tonight, because they've really made it happen.
Can we just make sure we're included in that? Because I want to be sure if somebody calls, we have.
Well, that's why I got you the last one last night. But the one on Sunday I sent out, I forgot you guys on the DL.
Okay.
I can actually forward you that tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
All right, school building committee update.
Mr. Millie and Mr. Tracy.
What a perfect segue.
Well, maybe we should have covered some other things first, actually. First of all, I mean, let's be honest, this is the first week of school, this is the first week of your tenure here, and this was a big something in front of you. So I, to get your team motivated to get out there and do things that are not in their job descriptions by any long shot, I was out, I was actually out holding signs on Tuesday morning, and Jim in his tie, suit and tie, comes walking by me on 125 with his vest, go ready to do traffic duty. I mean, you've got your team motivated to do the right thing, and this committee needs to know, as frustrating and as angry as people can get when sitting in traffic, everyone here is working for them and doing, going above and beyond, so I'm proud of you and the start you got off to. You know, this committee, actually not Ms. Mably and Ms. Lynch, but, you know, we made a decision, I think, I would say in the fall of 2016, to have an aggressive schedule to get this thing open. Our goal for the longest time in this district was to reduce class size. And we all agreed that it was an aggressive schedule to get on, but we thought it was important. We talked about reducing the class size for a long, long time. And I know I remember our first meetings with the architect, that that's going to be really tight to get that in. And we knew that going into it, and I don't think, you know, I think the public just needs to know that it wasn't just simply hiring a contractor to build it. And, you know, when it comes to funding public projects, you know, you can't sign a contract unless you have the money. There are three different contractors who've worked on this project. Because of different funding sources, you know, we had town meeting, approved one thing, Fed money come out of, you know, FY19 budget, so you couldn't sign contracts until you had the money. You're not allotted it by law. So obviously, the building itself is solid, secure, and as you mentioned, the teachers got in it last week and done a great job making it a school, not a building anymore. The site work, a different contract governed by the town, who've done a fantastic job, you know, squeezing and getting the contractor to do what we want them to do. Also, trying to do this in light of what's going to happen next with the field project. We don't have the big field parks coming on, so there's been that kind of, that kind of thought has to go on, too. So this is not just a one project, and it's not to make excuses, it's just that I think we all knew it was going to be, you know, a lift. And I think, you know, by and large, we got there. The site work is still going to be going on for another two to three weeks. But I think, as you mentioned, Riley, construction's doing a heck of a job. They were working all over Labor Day weekend. I was up here on Sunday and Monday, and, you know, I don't think they were there Monday, but my point is that they've been working hard. So it'll be done soon, and I just, I can't say enough about the staff. And the responsiveness of your administration so far has been fantastic, so. We're going to get there, I think the building looks great, and just a few little odds and ends, punchless stuff to get done. What am I missing, Mr. Millie? Have we talked about traffic enough, I think?
Yeah. The only thing I'd say is, in talking to Mike, he's very good about, he's on-site, Mike Riley, right? And he's on-site, so he's seeing what we're dealing with. And just this morning, he said, "Jim, don't worry, we're going to put some paved walkways where you have the bus loop, because the bus loop is paved, but the kids are walking out on the gravel." And he's like, "We're going to do that as soon as we can, so probably for Monday, we'll have some pavement for them to be walking on, coming out." Yeah, but he's been great, and they're just going to keep plugging away with sidewalks and the curbing that has to go in, and it's going to get done pretty soon.
And it's a seat, so it's great for those new teachers in there. Yeah, very, very, very happy with the level of teamwork on this. And when we have our grand opening, you know, sometime at the end of this month, or first week in October, I think it's looking like, you know, there's a lot of people to say thank you to, and I look forward to doing that.
If anybody asks, too, the stairs are done, but they cannot be used without railings. And that's why they're not being used, and the railings are supposed to begin, so that we'll have them available for Monday as well.
And we are sending statues over to all the staff tomorrow for lunch.
Oh, good.
For their efforts.
That's great.
Thank you. All right, old business, second reading of our approved recycling policy.
So I will move that we approve the recycling recyclable materials policy as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mably.
I know this is, can we?
Over for discussion.
Thanks. So obviously, it's a template, but we're just going to drop in our answers to these templates, like our district name and all that, that's all?
Exactly.
There's nothing else that we're going to say differently about it?
Correct. If you call this as part of that grant application, we needed to approve this. So we're approving the template, and then we exactly would drop in our information.
Right. So, and we don't have to, like, say at what point we start doing this or anything, or is it immediate?
Well, just at the bottom, adopted, and then we'll put the plan in place.
Right, like, because we need to get the bins and all that business.
Exactly. And if you remember, we have a coordinator that's part of the grant funding.
That's exciting, yeah. Great. So happy that we're doing this, or hopefully doing this.
Terrific. Any other comments? All right, vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five oh. Next is the second reading of the annual appointment of a school physician.
I'm sure I'm making a motion that the committee appoint Dr. Chian to serve as the school physician consultant for FY19 at a cost of $6,300.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trizzi, second by Ms. Picard. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Mr. Trizzi.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five oh. Last item under old business, we had a discussion at our last meeting in August with a request to recognize Mary Lou Connors with a plaque at the ABECC for all of her work in the past and through this project. And we are continuing that discussion now.
I'd just say that I didn't know Mary Lou too well, that well, you know, prior to, you know, 12, 18 months ago, but I think I've, you know, I've spent a couple of days a week with her now. And she's a dynamo. I mean, she loves the kids, she loves this town, she loves that school, and she's poured her heart and soul into it, so. I know when that group of teachers came last month, I was all in right away. I think we were talking about naming something after her, but, but I think a recognition plaque is more than appropriate, well-deserved, and for her, I don't want to call her employees, but I mean, her teachers to really come up with it was, just, it speaks volumes for her dedication, I would say. So I'm very happy to, I don't know if we need to vote on this, but whatever the language is going to be, you come in.
So I think, I mean, I absolutely agree, I mean, I think she's very deserving of it. My only kind of thought might be, when we do the grand opening, that we do something to present it there, because I think we'll probably have a lot of representation from the town. So I don't know if they had talked about doing something on a specific day, but that may be something that we consider.
I think that's a great idea.
And I just wanted to share that I was talking to a parent about the fact that I'd seen the, got a tour of the school a couple of weeks ago, and the parent said, "Is Mary Lou Connors still there?" And I said, "Oh, yes." And she said, "I was a high school student when she started the program over at the high school." I remember her, she's amazing, so, I mean, it happened to come up in that conversation. She said, "That is just fantastic." I said, "Oh, she's more than just there, she's making everything happen." So, I mean, that shows how long, so she really started that program as a little thing at the high school. And now look what it is. So I think it'd be wonderful.
Funny to watch her report with the, the construction workers and everyone else up there, it's pretty comical. But, yeah, well deserved.
Any other comments? So then I have a procedural question, if they're going to, do they obtain the plaque? Do they need our approval for the language on it?
Well, I think we should, I think we should see it. I'm sure it's going to be appropriate, but. Have they presented something to us?
No.
Maybe, I don't think we need to have a big deal about this, but maybe, you know, I'll be happy to volunteer to work with Jim and, not Mary Lou, obviously, but the name of the woman.
Judy.
Judy.
Not Judy Rogers, but is it Judy, the one who came here?
Kim.
Oh, no, Kim, yeah.
Kim, to, you know, finalize that, I'd be happy to take that on.
So is that plaque coming, is that our plaque or is that their plaque? Who's putting the plaque up? I mean.
Mary Lou's going to bag it, she had a brand new hand.
No, 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 I don't mean like who's physically putting it up, but I mean, like.
Are they asking us to recognize her, or are they wanting, asking permission that they would like to recognize?
I think they were asking permission for them to recognize her with a plaque.
Why don't I follow Kim?
Okay.
Why don't I do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, new business, first reading of overnight field trips. Item 12A, American Thought and DECA.
Thank you to Ms. Picard. She noticed with the band trip that there were some changes, so they'll be, I spoke with Mr. Jackson, they'll be coming back down the road with that at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you.
But the American Thought trip, this is something they've done in the past, you guys are aware of. I believe, two years ago, I believe you approved it, and that's when I chaperoned it. And you, I think, made the recommendation to fly Mr. McDevitt rather than the bus, because they packed.
Mr. Trizzi did that.
We packed in a lot in two days.
Right. And then the other proposals are the DECA competition in Baltimore, Boston, and Orlando.
So just for clarification, the Orlando trip proposal, is the trip canceled? Or is it that the proposal is going to be re-presented at a later date?
This is the DECA Orlando.
No, the, the band one, it wasn't Orlando, it may be a different location.
Yeah, the music department was planning to.
So there's a trip, a trip hasn't been canceled, it just needs to, it might be someplace different.
It had changed since the last time this was.
Yeah, to Nashville.
Should we change the forms that we've been using in the past for this stuff, or do we have a second reading, or?
No, this is a different form.
This is a different form.
A different format. The information seems like it's the same.
Yeah.
It's actually, this is easier to read, I can say.
I'm not sure if Bev did this herself, or this hour came from the high school, but I can certainly check.
No, it's fine, I think the information is correct.
I think it's easier to read personally. This is just an informative thing today, right?
Yep, first reading.
First reading.
I just had a question on the Boston trip. The cost on that is $350, whereas the cost to go to DC is $450. Is the Boston one that much higher because the hotel rate is higher?
I'm not sure, I can actually check.
Why am I missing cost on it, Mike?
So, is there a difference in spots? This one's on page two.
Oh, the funding, okay, that's on the back page, I thought it was on the front.
Well, so it's, because it's from seven to nine, and then the other one is, Baltimore is three days, so you think it would be more than that.
Right.
Yeah, maybe it's good to check, though.
I can certainly check, I do know that these DECA, I do remember when I went to DC, that a bunch of the kids got off the plane that night from the trip to DC and were picked up by Mr. Mafiaoni and the crew to go right over to the DECA competition, so I do know.
Oh, right, wow.
I think that that's kind of like a, not just a, you're there for a few hours, they're there all the time. Because I was wondering, they were staying in Boston that night last time as well.
It'll be good to just understand, because it seems like the Baltimore numbers are low, actually.
Certainly, we can check.
Other than that, it's good.
And alternatively, I thought that the Orlando numbers were low, because comparing it to what the band wanted, it was triple, band was triple the dollars, so I was curious about that, but now that's changing anyway, so. Cool.
So one of the things that I would just say is, these are great trips, we know they have great outcomes. I'm always interested to know, and it's certainly not in Ms. Tracy's responsibility, but these are for AP classes and for honors classes. And I look for opportunities for CP kids to also explore their world and have access to, you know, really enriching trips like this as well.
I think one of the goals this year, too, is, you know, is Madam Chair, myself, and Madam Vice Chair, meet to do the overlay of, you know, what we do every year for the.
Agendas.
The agendas for the course of the year. I think it'd be nice to have some of these folks, like Aaron Highland and the folks who came in last year, to talk about the singing. I think it would be nice to have from some of these other trips as well, because we never hear from them. We, you have noticed over the last six years or so, you approve these trips, but we very rarely have people come back to talk about it, so.
Right.
Any other comments on this, questions? Okay. Next is the first reading of the school committee and superintendent goals.
I'm happy to start and give a preface to this. Over the last, I believe it's the last two years, the school committee and the superintendent have had shared goals. And I think that was born out of the fact that for years, there were separate goals, weren't necessarily tied to the strategic plan. All the goals that we're looking to do are tied to what our plan is, what the strategic plan is. Also, as, well, the fourth superintendent in 10 years, there are certain goals by the LAAR and the NISIT program that I have to do. And they're very similar, actually, to a lot of the goals that Dr. Price had last year and the year before. And I actually have maybe an extra goal or two here. But one of the pieces was with the shared goals, the superintendent goals, every year, the school committee puts in a goal. Every year the School Committee puts in a goal that's individual. And this is one that we worked on some drafting the other day between Holly and Amy and myself, on having some benchmarks for this as well, because this has never really had benchmarks, it's just had the key actions. So we put some benchmarks there, and certainly this is something for you guys to look at and see if you have any feedback, because it would be, you know, something we'd be working to, but it would be a stated School Committee goal. In terms of the shared goals, I, I think that what's really critical is that, you know, this project, and I'm not going to highlight just what David was talking about with what we're trying to do in North Andover with class space and for class size and for programming, is important. But I also do think that, you know, the next real push has to be the middle school. And whether that's an MSBA project, whether that's other options we have to look at, we really have to be prepared to take key actions over the next period of time, depending on the outcome of how the MSBA letter comes out and where we are in the queue on that, find out if we get preliminary approval, et cetera. And more importantly, you know, where are we going to put, after we approve a budget, the, allocate those teachers to lower class size to finish out elementary? Where are we going to put the teachers where there are different needs, and those would be in some of the key actions. And then more importantly, to keep that going is the Facilities Master Plan Two. And the Facilities Master Plan Two, as you know, will need representation. I know Jim's been on it in the past, but typically, I'm not sure if we had School Committee representation on Facilities Master Plan One.
There wasn't a School Committee member.
Well, I think, I think this may be different because these other school projects are going to be on that Facilities Master Plan.
Right.
And Franklin and then Atkinson and Kittredge.
Yeah, the last, the last plan was more about the.
Municipal sector.
Right.
Well, we had Kittredge, Jim, we had this office, we had.
The Atkinson windows.
What ended up being the Anne Bradshaw Early Childhood Center. I think that might be.
That's all.
But I mean, so Jim has been the representative, but it seems like it would be great if we could also have, if they'll let us have a member of, one of our people on.
You know, so in, in terms of that, you know, I think that it's important to, we continue to look at what are the needs of the ABECC and do that in this transition. But also look at the senior study for the MSBA, what's the recommended budget look like for next year, classrooms by grade finalized, and school representation on the Facilities Master Plan Two. Because that's going to have a big impact on our other schools as well. And then the second shared goal, I think, that's really critical is the maintaining momentum. I think we have an opportunity in North Andover, as you guys know, there's sixty-five new superintendents this year in Massachusetts and there's forty.
I did not know that, actually.
And there's forty-five first-time superintendents and never had the job before, and locally, there's about fifteen of us that are in my cohort. And I, I think, you know, with the trend in all these districts of start, stop, start, stop, we have an opportunity to actually capitalize on this really important one of maintaining momentum. You know, part of it is our professional practice and goals is an administrative team that, that I'll really spearhead with the team. But then secondly, how is the superintendent going to continue to push and work with the town manager to advocate for the school needs and continue that relationship of collaboration, cooperation? And then secondly, how can the School Committee as well continue to advocate working with our legislative elected folks, all the different people that are really going to be important in terms of the foundation budget review, the MSBA projects, et cetera, which is pretty exciting. And then the, the next are similar to the previous superintendent, but in the same times, I think there were some things that we kind of phased out, like the technology goal last year.
Right.
I think was kind of like beating a dead horse, even though that's something similar in NISIP that's required by me. But it's the effective entry and direction setting, it's the fair and effective classroom teacher evaluation, that's still a huge ongoing project with us around evaluating staff, and then the last piece is the visibility. But back to the one I wanted to really highlight, and I know this is a first read, and I know we had a chance to look at this in August. The effective entry and direction setting. Typically, new superintendents make recommendations for the, really, the end of the year. Couple of things that are really interesting here is we have a strategic plan that we approved on June twenty-first for eighteen, nineteen. We're sticking to that plan. And at the end of the school year, like I mentioned earlier, we have an opportunity to maybe change some objectives or initiatives in the overall strategic plan with the team and all of our various stakeholders, based on the needs assessment of the entry. But I also put in some language that was different than the typical language NISIP or other superintendents put in. When I present the entry plan, I thought it might be important to provide slash recommend one or two strategic initiative priority changes in the strategic plan, if applicable, for this upcoming budget season. I wouldn't want to lose that opportunity, learning what we've learned, what I've learned for December, to at least have the ability to make that recommendation. So it will impact this budget cycle. And then, you know, in May, we'll be looking forward to really continuing to build out this plan in terms of the strategic plan, the curriculum plan, the student services plan, and all the different areas, which may change, may not change, so.
So I know it's probably a little bit of a challenge with that, but when we look at by May to propose three to five changes to objectives, my only concern with that is, I mean, I'm sure it's after town meeting at this point, budget will be set. How do you see that? I mean, if you're, if you have one initiative that requires something with funding or something of that nature.
So the, the major changes would be more of the long-term, long-range plan.
Okay.
That's why I put the piece in about the one or two recommendations for.
So like by December, January, you're going to say?
We may have one or two recommendations based on this entry.
Yeah.
But when I say those three to five, it may be three to five, but this is, this is something that would be a longer range. Just like we have the strategic plan that's built out over years now.
Okay.
That's where that would be tied to.
It also says by May twenty-third, not after.
No, well, I know, but.
But the budget's over by then.
But the, that's why I put the December piece, because most super, new superintendents and folks don't put that piece in, so I did change that language, because I think, you know, that it'll be important, there may be one or two things that we're going to recommend as a result of.
So you're almost saying you're going to want to, we have already voted our initiatives, but you might discover something and that we have to put money in, so we might have to even look at revising that at that midpoint as well.
Yeah, it's just really, like, one of the most needs based on this assessment that we may want to make a recommendation for next year's budget. You know, I know that's obviously we want to close the elementary class size piece, but say something came up, like, for example, I don't know, that the high school needed an additional AP chemistry teacher or something along those lines. I'd like to reserve the right to make a recommendation based on the feedback and based on working with the team that will impact this year's budget, because you're exactly right, Andrew. May twenty-third, those things, just like the strategic plan was born, it took about a year and a half for the strategic plan to really take place initially when we got this going. So that's more of the longer range.
I just want to be sure that, you know, we're not locking in the budget in that way and not, not presenting something that we're going to have an ability to change or modify after the fact, so.
Okay. That's it.
Ms. Picard, you had a couple of suggestions.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of things that I would just ask about. In Goal Three, in the key action number one, it talks about the school improvement goals. And I'm wondering how the school councils might take part of that.
Yes, so part of the, part of the mid-cycle evidence would obviously be the MCAS presentation, but the school councils would have to participate with the principals, just as we've done in past years, you know how the, so shortly, if they ever do release all the MCAS, and they've released some preliminary stuff to us, but not, everything's embargoed and confidential. We'll present the, we've always presented the district, the overview for the district, and that's when we've had the principals come in with their plan of what is the, to celebrate, where is the concerns, and what are the action steps? And that's their opportunity to participate in that plan.
And I, I don't think that we had school councils at all our schools in past years, so I'm wondering if that's something that we're working towards.
I'd have to check. I, I.
So I'd love to know that, you know, at some point, and how the school councils will have an opportunity to, to take part in that. It's a different sort of group than our administrators or our PTOs. They have a different charge.
Yeah, for those who don't know about school councils, under the Massachusetts general law, under the Ed reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, they put in school councils, and it's made up of a community member, it's made up of a principal and a couple of teachers, and equal representation in bounds. So it's really kind of a neat group. I always had one when I was principal. I know, I'd have to check. I honestly don't know the answer, so.
Yeah, and last I knew, the high school didn't have one, and hadn't had one for many years.
Yeah, that may be something new on to check.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be a great improvement, I think.
Yep.
I mean, just meeting the law, but also as being useful and helpful to our schools and to this committee, to have that kind of input.
Most importantly, as a principal, I can tell you what I found the most valuable is a sounding board when we're looking at budget and these things.
Exactly.
Like oftentimes, they didn't make the final or hard decisions, even though we worked collaboratively, it was like, what about this? And they were really helpful people.
Brainstorming.
Well, as you said, you know, I mean, the different perspectives are important, and in order for us to, to carry through with that, that good work that you're starting now with your entry plan, we need to make sure that we do that all the way through the process.
Certainly.
Another thing that, that I would like to see in Goal Three, in maintaining momentum, it doesn't say anything about the curriculum, and we've been making all these curriculum changes. So I don't know if there's any language that could be added, or if it's somewhere else and I'm not noticing it.
It's the, by, it's, it's the administrators revise and refine the student learning, professional practice, and school improvement goals.
Is that, could you put curriculum?
That's what, yeah.
If you could put the word curriculum, it would help me identify that in the same way.
So the student learning and all that, it's all tied to curriculum. I'd ask Lorene to chime in, but I, we don't.
No, 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 just if you could throw the word curriculum in, it would help me.
Thank you.
It would help me to focus on, in that way. And then, when I was looking at the, I think it was the last goal, and it says about having a hundred contacts with the schools, or a hundred school visits. That's, I mean, we can measure that pretty easily, but I'd like to, to have some language around that that would mean it was impactful and meaningful. I'm sure you're going to have impactful and meaningful contacts and visits, but there's nothing, there's no language in there.
Well, I, I think, you know.
I just don't want you jumping on your scooter and running to all the schools feeling like, oh, my gosh, I'm only at ninety-nine, right?
For those who don't know, over the past six years, I've started my day at a school three days a week typically. And I know a lot of kids, and we walk classes and stuff. Oftentimes, I do like to do more formal things with principals and walkarounds, but I got to tell you, oftentimes, I like to go around without anybody. And actually, because that's nice when you get to go into a classroom and see kids and see what they're doing and hear from them and hear from the teachers. What I would say about that is, you know, these are real specific goals that I have to have, but just because we have these goals doesn't mean that we're not going to have, you know, all the other stuff that we're working on, like our professional rounds and walkthroughs, so we could probably tie some of that together.
Yeah, I mean, just if you could.
Yep.
You know, connect some language to make it sound like it's purposeful instead of, you know, a check the box, which I know it will be purposeful, it's just, when you look at a document, it's just like, well, how does that connect with what we're doing, so.
I, I would honestly say with that, I mean, a little bit to add on, I mean, I think the community and the leaders in the community, whether it's, you know, police and fire, Mr. Mailer, Board of Selectmen, you know, you. The kids, they, they don't react in a negative way when they see the police come in, right? I mean, they're, they're just.
It's normal.
It's very normal, like, you know, you could literally be in my kid's classroom, and they wouldn't even come home and tell me, because it's just, it's not that big of a deal. Like, I mean, they just, they're used to you being in the buildings, they're used to being, you being in the classrooms. I think sometimes when there would be walk-throughs and it would be, you know, like I remember, Mr. Jackson came in, and Dr. McQuade came into Kittredge, my kids kind of came home and were like, well, we don't understand why the other principals were there. Like, that, that didn't make sense to them. But by and large, I mean, I think the, the people in this community, I'm not saying they walk freely through the schools, but, you know, they're in the schools because of, you know, literacy days and reading days and just checking out what's going on. And, and I think that, you know, I'm not saying everyone is meaningful, but your presence is meaningful.
Thanks, Andrew. I think the goal for me is, the hard part of why I put that is, honestly, that's the NISIP language under the, what they ask you to do. But secondly, like.
Ah, okay, that's helpful.
What I'm saying, but not that formal, like, they know I'm coming. I learn more about what's happening in curriculum and in classrooms and in social emotional learning by just walking in somewhere and being quiet and listening, or reading a book, or whatever it is with the kids. That's why they were important to me, it was not necessarily, you know, in mid-cycle evidence, I don't know what that could look like, we could figure that out, but, thank you. Good commentary. I'll look at that.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to thank Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair for working so many hours of kind of trying to refine these to make these meaningful. Having been a former employee, but also being a new first-time superintendent, because I just wanted you guys to balance that.
Okay, we have first reading of several policy manual updates.
Yes, we're going to have to, oh, she'll be here soon. Okay, so I can give you an idea. So if you look at Roman, tiny Roman numerals, one, two, three, and four, these are all new ones that came through MASC as recommendations. In talking to Suzanne Egan, particularly the military children and the children in foster care policies are things that are by law that we do already, but they're not in our policies right now. So she's recommending that it's just formally added in, and again, that came to us through the MASC. And if you want to start by looking at those two.
Does, I don't know if you answered this question, Ms. Navely, but does our town council look at these to make sure they are compliant with the law, or do we just take MASC?
No, she reads them and she talks to, in some cases, and I worked with Dr. Gilligan, she checks in with the appropriate members of the staff first, to have them look at it before, I mean, I even look at it. So, and Suzanne does that work with them, and then says, this is what we're recommending.
And that's a nice, fresh approach, because we've adopted a lot of MASC stuff over the past, and speaking with outside council, who've done some work with us, professional development, and with her. Some of the MASC stuff is excellent, but it's, sometimes there's more, there's extra things in there that don't necessarily need to be there under the law.
Right.
Just a quick example, the town wanted to start spraying fields for mosquitoes, you know, and I had to call the town Board of Health, and I said, guys, under our policy, it's a five-day written notification to families at schools, but, you know, that's only because it was adopted from MASC a long, long time ago, before you guys were on the board, saying that we would do five days, but the law only requires two everywhere else, so, things like that, just trying to tighten that.
Do we change that policy?
Not yet, but the letter's going out tomorrow, because the spraying next Wednesday.
Stay tuned.
So all this redlining and highlighting and all that does not come from me and my infinite wisdom of these things, it comes from our town council. And I talked with her and asked some preliminary questions, just. But.
So I would request a small change in the education opportunities for children in foster care. The second paragraph says, the law requires that foster care students continue. I would just ask that it be changed to, the law requires that students in foster care continue, blah, blah, blah.
Rather than calling them foster care students.
Correct.
Students in foster care.
Yeah, I think it's a little.
Through the rest of it, they're referred to as students in foster care.
Yeah, because it'd be.
For us, our primary purpose in relationship with them is their studenthood, not their foster care.
That's great. I'll note that. That's students in foster care.
So I have some questions on the first one, but I wonder if I should wait for her.
So Suzanne said she'd be here by now. She said she only had a quick forty-five minute planning board meeting?
That can't be true.
She said she didn't expect to be any later than forty-five minutes.
They've gotten better since Simons got up to chair, right? They've gotten a little bit better.
So. We can either gather our questions, or we can hold off to another meeting if you want to.
I actually have a quick question on the minutes. Is there, there's, we obviously have them recorded, right?
Right.
How long do recordings have to, is there any law or stipulation with that?
I'm sure there, there's a.
In perpetuity.
No, no, that's, that's a question for Suzanne.
I can ask that. I'll, I'll research that, okay.
Right.
You're talking about just the video ones, or the, because Bev has binders full of minutes for a very long time.
Those I know, and I'm sure they're electronically in some folder in multiple places.
But you want to show the videos.
But it, you know, it talks about the fact that minutes are not a transcript of, I'm sorry, yes, minutes are not a transcript of the meeting, but we certainly have.
Correct.
An audiovisual transcript of it, and I've just wondered if there was any reference to that anywhere else.
I will get to, I'll let you know.
All right. And then, on the student accounts, do I, I know this is going to sound weird, but I feel like I'm missing a page. Is it, does everybody else start with number five?
Yes, mine does, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they're.
And I honestly can't remember what it looked like before, unless they're just in backwards.
So four.
Okay, all right, okay, it's just reversed, all right.
Yeah, so this page just needed to be stapled the other way, right? Goes like that, yep. So that gives you the idea, the red text and strike-throughs were changes recommended by MASC.
I see it now.
And the yellow.
This is consistent with one of the parts that they have in the recommended policy is that you have an outside audit done every three years, so the last audit we had asked us to comply with, or at least emulate what the MASC has for their policy. So we would be. So we would be consistent with them and with what the auditors are looking for.
Okay. But the strike-throughs, there's a significant yellow strike-through section at the end, and that recommendation, is that from?
That was from the auditors, that it'd be more procedures than part of the policy.
Okay. And you, and you agree that that's a good idea?
Yes.
That's why it's yellow, okay.
Yep.
So that's why there are huge strikeouts, because I know that's, and then the red is the new stuff that's been recommended instead.
So one question I think we can probably answer without her is on the first one, the military children one.
Mm-hmm.
On the second page, when it says the receiving schools must initially honor placement of the students from the sending school, et cetera, and it says must also initially honor placements of like programs, and it says including such as gifted and talented program, we don't have that, so I wonder if we should not falsely, mislead, strike something like that?
Yeah. To me, I mean, it says including but not limited to, and if we were ever to develop gifted and talented programs, then it would already be in there, we wouldn't have to.
Well, also, do we have, do we offer international baccalaureate?
We do not.
We don't do that either?
At this point, but we might at some point.
It does say if those courses are offered in the receiving school and space is available.
Okay.
And then, this may be a question for her, but above that, the immunization requirements may be met within 30 days? Or if that should be must be met?
No, it's not.
No?
For example, homeless students can register without immunization. Is that one for the military? I'm sorry, my glasses.
That's the military?
Yes.
I bet you that's correct.
Okay.
But we can check.
Wait, there was another one?
Well, I mean, the other thing that it says is in progress, I mean, some of them you can't, it's, you know, one dose, volatile, something, so.
About getting paid for overseas schools, or something like that, it could be, so that's why I wanted to make. I was going to say, what I, the comment I made earlier was that if Suzanne is telling me that this is, you know, in accordance with the statute, I mean, statute's going to be the, this is great, it's in our book and stuff, but the statute's going to dictate.
Right. She said it's just basically putting in place what we're already following and required to follow by law.
It's a huge deal, if there's ever a question of we weren't meeting the students' needs or were giving what he was entitled to, they're not going to our policy, they're going to the statute.
I think this was, yeah, strictly to, for housekeeping purposes.
Yeah, just give the MASC some of that.
Any other questions that have come up?
Well, the one, the other one I had, but I think it's a question for her, is the same thing, military children one, the, yeah, fifth paragraph down, eligible students are those who are children of active-duty personnel, comma, active-duty personnel. So I didn't know if that was a typo, or if I'm reading it wrong.
Because you're not going to have active-duty personnel who's a student, right? Is that what that, because that's what it sounds like.
Right.
So that was the part I didn't know if that was there.
So it seems to me children applies to active-duty personnel and veterans.
Right.
So that second active-duty personnel looks repetitive to me, yeah.
Okay, I can check with her on that, too.
So should we hold off on the first reading?
I think this is just, is this...
It's the first reading, anyway.
Yeah.
I think maybe you'd probably just make sure she's here next time.
Yeah.
But I mean, is the next one another, should it be a second reading next time?
We can, maybe put it in the second reading and see, and if we're not ready, we don't have to vote in the second reading, it's not required.
Okay.
But I will get the answers to those two things. And then, number five, the personnel policy, that is strictly Suzanne, so.
And this is just the stuff we talked about in June, right?
Yep.
Just put into the handbook?
I think so, but I can't, I don't know for sure.
What I can say about that is, that's why we really invited Suzanne tonight to talk about this. She worked with Kerry Wahlberg to make sure that we had the most up-to-date laws matching our policies and procedures in that personnel handbook.
Okay.
That's what Frank is.
So we come to public comment, is there any comment tonight?
Oh, boy.
Just a quick, David would be disappointed if I didn't say something.
Of course I would.
I just wanted to echo...
Excuse me, sir, could you please introduce yourself?
Stanley reported, Free Stone Cleaver. I just wanted to echo Mr. Treese's comments, actually, about the opening of the new Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Complex or Center, whichever it is. I'm absolutely amazed at how well that project went. I'm sure it looked to some a little rough around the edges when we got started, but I was absolutely amazed that it all came together right at the end, and everybody got in there, and it was just an amazing thing to me to see how well that really turned out. You know, even one of the construction workers who was standing outside said, two weeks ago, I didn't think this was going to happen. So even they were, I think, a little dubious about the success of that project, but I think it was wonderful, and I think certainly, once you walked inside that, once you walk inside that school, it's wonderful, it's miraculous inside. So I think everybody has a lot to be proud of. Three people that I would mention kind of in passing, who I'm sure everybody, you know, knows their contribution, but I just think it's important to mention that, as Mr. Treese pointed out, without funding, we wouldn't have a school. So I would always be the first to thank our town manager, Andrew Mailer, who through creative financing helped us get to this point. Ray Santelli, our assistant town manager, who is one of the best project managers we probably will ever have in this town, and always helps us get things done with our assistant superintendent, Mr. Mealy. And third, Eva Hamery, who was really helpful in getting everybody moved into that school. I think she played a key part in making everything come together right at the end, so I think she deserves some credit for how well everything sort of turned out at the end. But I'm, I think it's an amazing accomplishment, I really do, and I'm so pleased with the way that turned out. It's, it's one of those times when it really makes me proud to be a resident of North Andover.
Oh.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any final comments?
Yeah, I'll echo what Stan just said with Eva, one of many talented people on the school building committee. You know, she took that part of the project to heart, and it's part of her background and her professional life, and she was instrumental in the, in the move. We had a very talented school building committee, and I'd be remiss if I didn't single out one person in particular who had a very big week, my vice chair, Christina Minicucci, who also got the Democratic nomination of state rep, so, and she's a big supporter